Good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock on Monday, December 7th, and we'll call the regular meeting of the Sault Ste. Marie City Commission to order. Roll call, please.
Gary?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Commissioner Baspus Rath?
Here.
Commissioner Collins?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Talantino?
Here.
Commissioner Twardy?
Here.
Everybody's in attendance. Thank you. Commissioner Miller will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. If you could all please arise and put your Zoom on mute so we can hear him.
Thank you, Your Honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Commissioner Miller. And Commissioner Miller would like a moment to make a brief statement.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for this time. I just wanted to say that earlier this afternoon, I broke my ankle. I slipped and broke my ankle, and I wanted to say thank you very much to all the great people at Warham Memorial Hospital with everything they're going through right now. They took pretty good care of an old man with a broken ankle. I almost didn't make the meeting tonight. The reason why I'm making this statement, though, is that I'm under some very strong pain medicine. I didn't want to miss the meeting, but I don't think it would be right for me to make any votes tonight. So, Your Honor, if you were not calling me to make any motions, and I've already told the deputy city manager that I would be abstaining from all votes this evening. Thank you.
Thanks, Shane. We hope you get better quickly, and we appreciate your desire to abstain, so...
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
...call on you on any of those. All right. Item number four, Mayor Comments and General Announcements. This evening, I have none. Under B, Proclamations and Recognizations, there are none. So, moving on to number four, Public Comment. Is there anybody online that would like to make any comments on any of the agenda items this evening? Looks like it's mostly... Looks like Taylor's there from the paper. I don't know if Bob is internal. Is anybody that's online would like to speak to any of the agenda items this evening? We just need your name and address when we get there. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item D, which is the Consent Agenda. Deputy City Manager, Robin Troyer.
Thank you. Under the Consent Agenda, approval of the City Commission Meeting Minutes of November 16, 2020. Item two, acceptance of the Planning Commission Meeting Minutes of September 24, 2020. Item three, acceptance of the Planning Commission Special Meeting Minutes of November 5, 2020. Item four, acceptance of the Sault Ste. Marie Housing Commission Meeting Minutes of September 17, 2020. Item five, acceptance of the Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting Minutes of September 17, 2020. Item six, appoint William Burgess and reappoint Jennifer Dutton and Ron Wood to the Dialoride Local Advisory Board. Item seven, appoint Maria Guz to the Zoning Board of Appeals to fill the balance of a term to expire June 1, 2022. Item eight is resignation of Seth Harris from the Zoning Board of Appeals effective October 8, 2020. Item nine is from the Sault Ste. Marie Area Public Schools, request for city to collect the 2021 summer property taxes for the Sault Ste. Marie Area Public Schools. Item 10 is consideration of a Merz defined benefit plan adoption agreement addendum. And item 11 is approval of the Consent Agenda items as presented.
Thank you. Any commissioner want further explanation of any of the items or want to remove any of the items for further consideration? Commissioner Twardy?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda, please.
Support.
The move to support. Any questions or comments before we vote? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino? Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Nothing under the Special Orders of Business or Communications this evening, so we'll roll right along into G, Business Items. City Manager, Brian Chapman.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Up first for commission consideration is a request to enter into a maintenance agreement with MDOT for services related to the roundabout up on the business spur. This is a house cleaning item that's come down to us per our request from a couple of years ago. When the roundabout was first being installed, there were some internal talks with staff about landscaping around the roundabout. We'd asked for a little bit more than what they typically would do, and when that happens, we're typically on the hook to maintain it. So, with this agreement, we formally accept the responsibility to maintain the landscaping within the roundabout. A lot of the infrastructure has been installed, including water lines for sprinklers. Being shorthanded as we were this year, we didn't stay on top of it. Part of it was a transition that we didn't know we were supposed to stay on top of it. There were some volunteers that came forward that honestly helped us out with cleaning it up towards the fall here a few weeks ago. But staff would look for commission to approve and authorize execution of the contract with MDOT as presented.
Thank you. City Manager, Commissioner Baker, do you have any questions or comments for the manager?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Baspus Rath?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
No, thank you.
Mr. Miller?
Oh, sorry.
Commissioner...
Actually, Your Honor, I have a question, even though I'm not voting. I do have a question for you or for the city manager.
Yes, sir.
When they put the roundabout in, there was a rumor that Mr. Tom Robinson was collecting some donations. He wanted to put a statue there or something, whatever. Whatever happened to that? Has that come to fruition or is that just done?
No, he's still working on it. Part of this agreement has some wordage in there regarding the statue. It outlines the process the city would have to take to facilitate that. He was still raising money prior to COVID, and I think since COVID, he's kind of backed off on the fundraising a bit just because you never know who's got extra money and who's struggling. So, he's kind of taken a pause on that. I know he's been communicating with the artist quite a bit about it. He's got a real good design. He's got a good finance plan for it, but just like anything else, he just kind of took a backseat to COVID.
So, it could happen eventually.
I think it will happen, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Talantino, any questions or comments?
No, I'm all set, Your Honor. Thank you.
Commissioner Twardy?
I just wanted to say thank you to the Beckman family, and I know that there were other volunteers, but I know that Dr. Beckman's family stepped up, and they did a lot of the work there this fall. And when I was originally reading this, I had a joke. I thought that it was actually MDOT's responsibility to take care of this for the first two years, and they didn't take care of anything. They did install it, but no care was taken care of. So, I think it'll be great. I think that we should continue to throw this out there to see maybe if some volunteers do want to help with the city in maintaining it, because I know that landscaping is a lot of work, and I just thought they did a great job. So, just thank you to them.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker, do you want to make a motion?
Yes, thank you. I make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a contract amendment with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the roundabout landscaping maintenance and contract 20-5330 amendment to contract 17-5545.
Support.
The move to support. Any further questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins? Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino? Commissioner Talantino?
He's frozen.
Yeah, he's either super still or he's frozen.
I think he's frozen.
All right. Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
And Mayor Gary?
Yes.
And I'll just note that Commissioner Talantino has voted yes in the online voting portal.
And we just lost Tim. Real quick, Mr. Mayor, Tim just signed out.
We'll wait. We'll wait for him for a second. How you feeling there, Shane?
Everything but my ankle's good. I still got this, Your Honor.
I see you're sporting your bracelet. That's nice.
Oh, yeah. I still got my hospital bracelet on. I'll tell you what. What a great... Since we're waiting for Tim anyways, what a great group of folks there at Warham Memorial Hospital. Like I said, they've got a lot more important things to do right now than... The pain in my ankle was so bad, I just had to go there. And what a professional, great staff. We're lucky to have a nice hospital like that.
Yeah, we sure are.
Yeah. They took good care of me.
Great. Need some of that Jeopardy music or something in the background.
You could probably tell a joke. I don't know. I've never heard Mr. Chapman tell a joke. How about you?
Yeah, now while we're recording.
Yeah.
Don't bother. Don't bother me. Record me. I don't care. I got nothing to hide. When my daughter Chelsea was little, when she was a little girl, her favorite joke was, "What's the best time to go to the dentist?" Tooth hurtie. Tooth thirty.
All right.
That's all I got.
You're back.
Sorry about that, guys. Internet's dropping here down in the Mission area, so, excuse me.
All right. You voted yes on the last item on Board Doc, so that was excellent.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. G, Business Items, number two. City Manager.
It's all those Christmas lights blocking your Wi-Fi, Tim. You need to put in more.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next for commission consideration is a request from the Water Department for a series of three motions related to our disinfection system at the wastewater or the water treatment plant, not wastewater. First motion and second motion being... Or first motion, excuse me, is to suspend the competitive bid process for two different companies, as well as the follow-up motions to award the purchase to each company. So, there's a good explanation within this agenda memo. The nutshell is we have the funds budgeted. There's a little bit of change in the direction, but the purchases still fall within our disinfection system. Having a new superintendent onboard, he's kind of decided to take that purchase in a different direction, but it still falls within the idea and what we're trying to get done with the disinfection system. Being the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant typically have very technically sophisticated processes in there. It's common to sole source from certain vendors. There is a preference and a different type of compatibility that goes into our system. So, we're looking for three motions, motion to suspend the competitive bid process and two separate motions to award the purchases to the companies that we are recommending.
Okay, let's go through a roll call with questions. Commissioner Baspus Rath, questions or comments?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Excuse me. Commissioner Collins?
All set. Thanks.
Commissioner Talantino?
All good. Thank you.
Commissioner Twardy?
Just going to make a comment. I'm glad that we were able to kind of work on upgrading the system and keeping it within our budget. So, kudos to you, Brian Chapman, and then also to the new superintendent so for doing your job and making sure that the city's water stays safe.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker, any questions or comments?
My only question, so the disinfectant... Disinfection system improvements, the 77,000, what we're doing now is in place of what we had planned? Or are we going to have to come up with additional funding to cover that 77 down the road since we're taking from that pile for this?
I'll ask Mr. Toos to come to the virtual podium here so he can ask that or answer that one a little bit better. But I believe we're just kind of switching a little bit. I don't recall if there's going to be another purchase that we'll have to do. Just like the wastewater plant, the water treatment plant does need a series of upgrades throughout it. So, I don't quite remember what the plan is moving forward. Kirk, are you there? You're still on mute if you are.
Yes, I'm here. So, what we're going to do is we're going to carry on with the current disinfection method which you use, which is gaseous chlorine that comes in ton containers. This was a point of issue a few years back. The city didn't have the proper safety protocols and paperwork in place and actually received a fine. That's what kicked off the whole, let's look at an alternative methodology to disinfect the water. We don't have time right now to study that. We are at the point of kind of critical mass with the equipment that we have. We need to get this equipment upgraded and back in place. And if eventually down the road, we decide to get away from that, we'll have to come back and reevaluate that at that time. But this equipment here will give us another longevity of 20 to 25 years, and that's the direction that I think that we should go in at this time.
Thank you. And this is all good, and I'm voting for it. I'm just curious if we're robbing Peter to pay Paul right now and if we're going to have to do it down the road so it's something that we keep in our, you know, in our mind that we're going to have to come up with another 28/1 to cover, go get back up to that 77?
Like you say, the longevity of this equipment is 20 to 25 years, and that's what we're looking to get out of it. So, at this time, I don't think we're robbing Peter to pay Paul. We're just moving forward with the system that we currently have in place, just upgrading it to modern technology.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Baspus Rath, did you want to make the motion? There are three separate motions, and first motion must be unanimous.
Okay. Motion to suspend the competitive bid process for RS Technical Services and Hamlet Environmental as they are sole source provider for the listing equipment and instrumentation.
Support.
The move to support. Any questions before we vote? A roll call, please.
Commissioner Baspus Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Motion number two.
All right. Motion to award the purchase of hydrochlorination equipment from RS Technical for the amount of 28,100.
Support.
The move to support. Any questions or comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus Rath?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Motion number three. You've been getting the longer ones lately, haven't you?
Yes. Thank you. All right. Motion to award the purchase of Swan Turbinator Turbometer and UV 254 Analyzer from Hamlet Environmental for the amount of 42,400.
Support.
The move to support. Any questions or comments? Roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Under G, Business Items, number three. City Manager Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the word is turbometer. Commissioner Baspus Rath, turbometer is what we're looking for.
Alex Turbrec.
I'm interviewing. There's somebody else on here watching this meeting. So, all right, up next for commission consideration is a budget adjustment for the 14th Street Booster Station project. This is a project that's been on our books for a while now. Finance Director Collins, as well as City Engineer Boyle has worked together to kind of close this project out with this motion. We would be looking to increase the budget allocated for this project with the amount coming out of the water depreciation reserve. With this motion, this will also close out the project, and we can close the book on this particular project. So, staff would look for a motion to increase the budget as presented.
Mr. Collins, any questions or comments on this item?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Talantino?
All set, Your Honor. Thank you.
Commissioner Twardy?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Commissioner Baker?
All set. Thank you.
Commissioner Baspus Rath?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Collins, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. Thank you. Motion to increase the project budget by $21,058 to a total of $239,157.94 with the additional funding to come from the water depreciation reserve.
Support.
The move to support. Any questions or comments? A roll call, please.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Item G, Business Items, number four. Moving right along.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next is consideration of a request to enter an installment purchase agreement with Old Mission Bank. This is another house cleaning item. The commission approved us to purchase a series of new equipment and finance it through Old Mission Bank during the September 8th meeting. There are certain legal requirements the city has to go through in order to secure a local bank loan. It's not as easy as just going out, getting the lowest rate, and signing a couple of pieces of paper. So, there are a series of legal requirements that we have to ensure we are following in order to make the purchase legal within the state law. So, the resolution as attached would do so. Other than that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to ask or answer them. But staff would look for a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Talantino, any questions or comments?
I'm good on this one also, Your Honor. Thank you.
Commissioner Twardy?
All set. Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Baker?
All set. Thank you.
Commissioner Baspus Rath?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
All set. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Talantino, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, Your Honor. Motion to approve the resolution authorizing installment purchase agreement with Old Mission Bank as detailed below.
Support.
The move to support. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Baspus Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. G, Business Items, number five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Up next is a request from staff to... For commission consideration, to change the municipal election years from odd to even. So, this particular motion is to establish a public hearing for the next commission meeting. Per the state law, they have dictated a certain process the city would have to go through in order to change from odd to even years. By switching from odd to even years, this would align our election process with state and federal processes. There would be a cost savings measure with this as that the bills associated with those elections would be split between the other jurisdictions. There's also a benefit to being on the same schedule as the state commissions board or something like that. Sorry, Rob, but I know I'm saying that board wrong, but there's a lot of marketing and information that comes out from the state, one of their agencies, and it would be better communicated if we were on the same timetable as them. So, pursuant to state law, we are asking to establish a public hearing for the next meeting at which we will receive public comment and then go into a final consideration with the commission. Because this would be pushing us out one more year, there would be a little bit of change to your current terms. Those that are expired or were elected in 2017 will now be extended to 2022. Those elected in 2019, 2024, and the mayor's seat elected in 2019 would be extended to 2022. So, with that, we would look for a motion to establish a public hearing for the next meeting.
I think the key words you said there were this is a recommendation from staff and didn't come from the commission just because of the extension of years. So, Commissioner Twardy, any questions or comments?
Well, just a few questions and comments. I think I'm all for saving the taxpayers some money. I do like that idea, and we've been talking about this actually as the commission, specifically Commissioner Talantino, for a couple of years now. What it will end up doing is we need to keep in mind is it's going to really place a lot of pressure on the three seats that are running always alongside the presidential election. And one of the reasons that we were always odd numbers before was that, what I was told from Steve Canelo, was because then we weren't always running right beside that presidential election. So, three seats could really, depending on who the candidates are, get a lot of turnout, and then the other three seats will not get as much turnout, even though we still are running alongside state elections. And then another question, well, that was just a comment, and then a question I have, and this is for Robin. So, what would happen... So, next year, I'm on the Board for Community Action Agency, and we have mellages coming due next year. And so, we were planning on placing those on the ballot next year, which they will end up doing. How does that affect those millage renewals? Can they change them, or do they have to keep them on the odd number of years that they always ran them on in accordance to be a lineup with the city election?
So, the state still has, regardless of the year, there's a May date, an August date, and a November date. So, if they opt to run their millage next year, they're going to foot the bill for that. Now, whether they can push that out an extra year, I have to research that on my end. What we're doing is instead of us taking the brunt of the cost of the election to have our own standalone, we're piggybacking on those state and federal elections, which is saving taxpayer dollars on our end. Right.
So, real quick, Robin, it's not that there can't be an election during an odd year. We just would not have one. So, if community action or the school district, or whatever the case may be, still has to have an election on an odd year, they would just be picking up the bill for that election.
Correct. Okay. All right. Those are just my comments. I'm sure somebody else is going to have comments, too. So, thank you.
Commissioner Baker, any questions?
Yeah, I think this is great, saving the taxpayer money, and we're going to get a higher voter turnout. I understand that we might get overshadowed by a presidential election a little bit, but at the same time, the voter turnout in our city, in my opinion, should be astronomically better, and I think this will help. And then it's a win-win, in my opinion, saving the taxpayer money and getting them to the polls. So, great job. Thank you.
Thanks. Good comments. Commissioner Baspus Rath, any comments, questions?
Not really. I do like the idea. I see that the fiscal impact is saving up to 15,000, so that's always good to see just how much it could save. Yeah, that's my only comment.
Good. Thanks. Commissioner Collins?
No comments. I'm good with it.
Okay. Commissioner Talantino?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, as Commissioner Twardy said, her and I have had some discussion on this at different times and what have you. Yes, there is a fiscal part of it. You know, we should be able to save money if we can. I think as far as turnout goes, she is correct on that. But looking at our current situation where we are politically in the United States, I think our turnouts are getting larger and larger every year, which I think is a fantastic thing. I'm all good for this. It's going to be interesting to see how it all pans out. But yes, I'll be voting for this as a yes this evening. Thank you. Um, I'm all good for this, uh, it's gonna be interesting to see how it all pans out, but, uh, yes, I'll be voting for this as a yes this evening, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Commissioner Twardy, do you want to make the motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion. Um, motion to schedule a public hearing on the consideration of a resolution to change municipal elections from odd to even years for the Monday, December twenty-first, twenty-twenty regular city commission meeting.
Support.
Been moved and supported, any questions before we vote? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Bosmas Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes. Motion passed unanimously, thank you. Uh, G business items number six, city manager Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, up next is a request to enter in a closed session with the city commission for purposes of discussing collective bargaining agreements. So we would look for a motion to be made as presented, and then a vote.
And we will not be coming back?
No, sir.
All right, uh, Commissioner Baker, do you want to make that motion?
Yes, thank you. I'll make a motion to enter in a closed session for strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of collective bargaining agreements in accordance with Section eight, see the State of Michigan Opening Meetings Act at the end of the meeting.
Support.
Any questions or comments before we have a roll call vote? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bosmas Rath?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed unanimously, we will move into closed session at the end of this meeting. Moving on into, uh, item H, city manager announcements and updates, there are none, uh, looks like a long list there, Brian.
That's super long, I've gone longer.
No, that's fine, take it away.
All right, up first and foremost is our new winter purport, prepare, uh, our winter guide that kind of walks new residents, current residents, through some of the intricacies of living in a winter community. Uh, you all probably received this in your emails several times last week, because I was trying to get it out to everybody, and so was Robin, so uh, it, it's a great guide, the staff really put this together. Um, they made it nice, they made it engaging, they made it very attractive, so it's a very nice guide, we're super excited for it. As simple a thing as it is, you know, we can't stop talking about it too much, so we want to get it out there, make sure everyone's aware of it. Um, but, obviously something like this, we can reuse year after year, we can just add things to it, make it a little bit fresh, but it's a great guide, truly, the staff put a lot of time into it, making sure the information was correct, it was pertinent, and communicated what we needed to, so, by all means, share it with your, your constituents, the public, and everyone else, and make sure they get a copy of it. Um, up next, the budget prep and goal setting schedule, we finalized that, that should be coming out in the next couple days, so keep an eye out for your email, when those schedules come out, we'll need you to check with your existing schedule to make sure those days and times will work. We have established those, uh, that process and those schedules to be virtual. You know, who knows how long we're gonna be on virtual meetings, so we've kind of kept that in mind, so a lot of it will still be on, um, Zoom. So, if there's a chance to get back into person sooner rather than later, then we will do that, but that'll be in your email box tomorrow. Uh, the next meeting, the second meeting in December, we'll be presenting the audit to you, so plan on a little bit longer meeting. And last but not least, because this is December, and there's some days off, I'll be taking a few vacation days around the twenty-third, to the twenty-eighth, the thirtieth, and the thirty-first, so. Other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, uh, any comments for city manager, or any questions for him?
I have a question.
Commissioner abstain there, put his finger up.
I got a question too.
Okay, Commissioner Miller?
Would you like to go first, Your Honor?
Sure, you had your finger up first.
I was just gonna say, that, uh, winter prep guide is wonderful, and all the staff that worked on that, kudos to them, that is a that is great, it's a wonderful thing, it's nice. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Collins?
Uh, just a question on the email that, uh, the city manager had sent out with the, in reference to the meetings that we have for this year. Are we only doing one meeting a month? The schedule that you sent out had thirteen meetings on it, one on the first Monday of every month.
Which, uh, oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, I know what you're talking about, the Zoom meeting, no, so, um, that meeting was just to get you the link for tonight, so on Zoom, I can't set a reoccurring meeting for the first Monday and the second Tuesday under one invitation, so I had to make a reoccurring meeting for the first Monday of every month, and then a second meeting for the reoccurring Tuesdays of every month, so it was just, uh, it's just a limitation to Zoom.
Okay, I just didn't see the, I just didn't see the second one.
And normally, normally I take those dates off anyways, because I always send a link out to you guys, uh, half hour or so before the meeting, so, but I, I was kind of rushing, so I'm, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, so basically, don't add them to my calendar then, is what you're telling me.
No, the approved, the approved mission meeting schedule that we had will still happen, so the first Monday and the second two, or, what is it, no, excuse me, holy smokes, the first Monday and the third Monday of every month, jeez, it's like I just started or something, so.
All right, gotcha, thanks.
And we were worried about Commissioner Miller.
He said, he, he said, he said Tuesday, and my ankle started to hurt.
Yeah. He handed me some candy when he got here.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for city manager? Great job to the staff on the winter preparation advisory, as Commissioner Miller says, it's great, nice resource, and, uh, I've heard a lot of, uh, very positive comments on it, so thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Hey, I just wanted to let the city manager know, as you just said, great job on that, I liked the clarification on the, uh, plowing procedures, but more than that, I liked the clarification on the parking procedures. That's always been kind of a gray matter with inside the city of what side you can really park on, technically, and as far as the parking times in the winter for plowing, so, great job on that, glad for the, uh, clarification, much needed, thank you.
Good comments, thanks. Anybody else? Uh, moving on to matters presented by the public, is there anybody online that would like to, uh, make any comments in front of the city commission meeting this evening? You can have up to five minutes. You have to, uh, unmute yourself, and, uh, let us know your name and address. If anybody would like to address the city commission this evening. Uh, seeing none, we'll move on to city commission, and any commissioners have any items tonight? Looking pretty quiet, everybody's.
That's me here.
Sorry, Abby, go ahead.
Um, a couple things, one, I wanted to give a shout out to the administration, um, it seems like every meeting that we have, they're checking something off their list of a project getting done, um, so kudos to, uh, the new department heads, and working really hard with Brian, uh, to get everything done, so, really happy with that, thank you very much, um. Also, a huge shout out to our healthcare workers, in our hospital, it's, uh, been pretty intense there, so I just want to give a shout out to them, and, uh, give a mention to a new, um, uh, program that just kind of started between the Community Foundation, the Chamber, the Downtown Development Authority, and War Memorial, it's called, uh, the Community Cares Buy, Thank, and Support, so the idea behind it is that you purchase, um, max of fifteen dollars, in increments of fifteen dollars, either a gift card, chamber bucks, or downtown dollars, um, so we're kind of doing a, they're kind of doing a two-fold thing of helping out and thanking our healthcare workers by donating the gift cards to them, but then also helping the local businesses downtown, so I'm not sure if Taylor from the Union News, or anybody, uh, has heard about that yet, but highly recommend everybody sharing that on their Facebook page, and really, uh, supporting that, because, uh, those guys need a big pick-me-up at, at the hospital right now, so.
Good comments, who would they contact, uh, Abby, if they wanted?
You can, you can go and purchase them at the Community Foundation, there in the Huntington Bank Building, as well as the DDA, uh, you pu- purchase the downtown, um, dollars down in the DDA office in the Huntington Bank, or in the Chamber, uh, Chamber of Commerce up on, uh, the Business Center, and then you can also just get any gift card from anywhere, it doesn't have to be the downtown dollars, but, uh, we're just trying to really focus on our local businesses and supporting them, as well as the, uh, healthcare workers, so it was a great, uh, idea that Debbie Jones and Tyler Rietor, uh, the Community Foundation came up with, and they reached out, I think, within, like, six hours between War Memorial and everybody, and got it done, so, uh, it's, they're looking, I, I think their goal is to get a thousand dollar, or a thousand fifteen dollar gift cards to give out to every, um, care worker at the hospital, so it would be a fantastic thing to do.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just forwarded the press release that came out, I think it was Friday, so you all should have it in your email box.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Sounds like a good program, and, uh, good recognition. Uh, anybody else? Commissioner Twardy, do you want to make a motion to move into closed session?
Uh, yes, well, first of all, I'd like to say happy holidays to everybody, Mr. Mayor, you might want to say that too. So, happy holidays to everybody out there, stay safe to our community, and motion to move into closed session.
Support.
Moved and supported, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned?